All right. We are going to call the meeting to order September 16th, 2025, City Council meeting. We are going to start with roll call.
Councilmember Idbo.
Here.
Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Onessa Rosen.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Mayor Dashler.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Will raise, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item is the agenda, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any questions on it or would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as, as provided?
You can make a motion.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Tracy?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, three, is the consent agenda. Consent agenda, they are, you know, items that are routine and non-controversial in nature, and we normally approve them in a single motion. I'll read them off, and then if anybody has any that they'd like to remove from the consent agenda, we can, we can do that. So approval of the minutes from the City Council work session, September 2nd, 2025. City Council meeting on September 2nd, 2025. Approval of disbursements over 25,000 submitted by the Finance Department. Approval of list of license applications submitted by the city clerk. Adoption of a resolution accepting a donation. Approval of the resignation of Alex Pot from the Parks and Recreation Commission. Approval of the appointment of Sonia Roby to the Park and Recreation Commission. Adoption of a resolution recognizing September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in the City of Crystal. And adoption of a resolution recognizing September 27th, 2025, as Walk for Alopecia Day in the City of Crystal. And adoption of a resolution authorizing a grant agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for the 2025-2026 Toward Zero Death Enforcement Program. And then also a gambling fund update. Is there any discussion? Anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will make it.
Okay, Therese?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, anybody second that? John?
So moved.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Next item is open forum, and that's an opportunity for residents to come up and chat with us for a few minutes about items that generally aren't on the, on the agenda, but maybe some ideas or some things that maybe you'd like to see on agendas in the future. So we have one that's filled out, is Bert. Would you like to come up, Bert? Say your name and address.
Mayor, Council. Bert Ord, 6700 60th Avenue North. The oft quoted aphorism, "If we build it, they will come." What's next? Thank you.
I know what he's referring to. And it's Becker Park, and the seasonal employees, you know, are pretty much done picking up the litter and doing the extra things needed to keep the park up. I want to say, what was the last day, like the 1st of September or something? I, I believe. And so I think that he wants us to be mindful to make sure that we budget for park upkeep, even after the seasonal employees have gone. Is that, did I get close?
I was short, but you explained it well.
Okay. Note taken. I think we got it, so. Any, anybody else here tonight to talk at open forum? Come on out. Before you leave, though, fill out one of these yellows. Oh, you do have it. Well, thank you.
And then I have some pamphlets. Would you guys like these before?
Sure. I had them on.
Whoa, ducks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So just step up to the podium and state your name and address.
I am Jennifer Suvie, 2716 Lamplighter Lane, I love it. Today I am proposing an animal ordinance change in the City of Crystal to be allowed to raise six domestic, non-flying ducks for fresh eggs, garden pest control, sustainability, and companionship. Currently, I'm not allowed to raise ducks, and I would like to do that, as many neighboring cities have recognized the importance of the backyard animal diversity such as ducks, bees, and others, and their contributions to families and the community. As of right now, Crystal allows chickens and pot-bellied pig. Other neighboring cities, Golden Valley allows animals such as chickens and goats. Another, Brooklyn Park allows raising bees. And then Robbinsdale allows ducks, geese, turkeys, chickens, pot-bellied pigs, and rabbits. So ducks share similarities with chickens, and actually have multiple advantages over chickens, just as being good garden pest control, provide larger and more nutritious eggs, hardier in the winter and summer months, and more importantly, much quieter and cleaner. What is supporting for this movement would be ducks are excellent pests, pets, excuse me, pets for families and companions. They're gentle, they're calm in nature, and can be enriching experience for families and children. They are entertaining and have funny antics, which can be a source of joy for you and your neighbors and your family. Speaking about the benefits, they're natural pest control, they're really good at eating slugs, snails, grubs, and other garden pests, and they provide other alternatives to chemicals, other than chemicals for pests, use of pesticides, excuse me, in your garden. They're also, unlike chickens, they tend to forage for bugs rather than destroying plants and landscaping, making them better for gardens. They are also a natural fertilizer. They produce more nitrogen, potassium, and phosphorus, providing excellent, eco-friendly fertilizer for your garden lawn. And lastly, they're nutritious eggs. Most ducks, ducks are really proficient at duck, or laying eggs, often producing more than chickens, more than chickens every year, especially during the colder months. They're better for baking, they're much larger, have a higher fat content, and they're about 50 to 100% larger than your average chicken egg. They're thicker in shell, and that means they stay fresher for longer. And also, children sometimes have allergies to chicken eggs, which they aren't to duck eggs, so it's a nice alternative for nutrition that way. And then I did, on the other side of the sheet, kind of just list some nuances and maybe issues, so. Ducks, they're quite quiet when it comes to noise concern, far less destructive than a rooster or a barking dog. Best thing would be to keep them in a predator-proof enclosure at night to ensure they do not disturb the neighbors. And also, when it comes to predators, their most biggest one is going to be foxes, raccoons. So then also keeping them in at nighttime, so they aren't having a chance to be eaten by their predators. And then cleanliness, there's very similar to chickens. Biggest thing is you would just provide a deep amount of bedding, which would not induce any odor in the community. And then difference between ducks and chickens is ducks like water. So providing enough water sources like kiddie pools that are easy to clean up and keep sanitized will keep them clean and won't get sick. Kind of glad to share. Any questions?
How many ducks? I mean, I think right now our ordinance is four chickens, is that correct?
That's correct.
How many ducks would most people want to raise?
Yeah, I personally know 10 is best for the humanity of them, but obviously 10 would not be approved, so I would vote for would be six. Maybe even increasing chickens to six, too. They do better in a flock, they're healthier, they're safer, they're calm, less likely to get disease, right, if they're healthier and calm. And they're just, you know, a lot less noisy, too, than potentially even.
I won't have to talk about this.
How long do they live?
Up to nine years.
And of those nine years, how long are they producing eggs?
Really well, up till five years, and then they still will produce till they die. And...
Have you raised them before?
I just dabbled and started taking care of some family friend's ducks, and I fell in love with them, so. I call them goofies, because they're, they're very fun to watch, they have great personalities.
And Robbinsdale allows both chickens and ducks? How long has that been in existence, do you know?
That I don't know. Yeah.
Cool. Thank you very much for coming and talking about this. I think it's something that we're all interested in discussing, for sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you very much. Wonder if the Sustainability Commission would take that up?
Why not?
No?
No, it'd be a...
It'd be a...
It was at a work session.
I just wondered because of that lack, you know, helping with fertilizers and things like that. All right, anybody else here to, this evening to talk at open forum? All right, seeing none, we will close open forum. Thank you for coming, it was interesting, so. And we will discuss it, so. All right, tonight our regular agenda, item number five. We are going to continue discussing of several civil liberties for violation of liquor license regulation by Missy Hope LLC. And the infraction was at 111 Willow Bend. We talked quite at length of this while you were gone, I don't know if...
You talking to me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you hear any of this?
Yeah.
Or watch it on TV?
I, I read the, through the notes.
Okay.
I'm aware of what's going on.
Okay.
I just want to, Mayor, if I can interject.
Yes, please.
You do have a hard 8:30 stop, so the goal is to get through all of our regular business tonight. So we've got hour and 15 minutes.
Right.
For four items.
Oh my word. So do, but if it goes past that, Tosh, you can, you know, take the reins.
Pro temp.
He is the mayor pro temp. So I guess I need a little coaching here, because we had a hearing last week, and the mo, you know, we tabled it. So do we need to open up discussion again, or how, how do we want to handle this?
Well, it's, yeah, so it's on agenda, it was placed on the agenda tonight, and if the council who is here recalls, there were multiple votes taken, but they were all resulting in ties. Staff's recommendation was the ordinance maximum of the one-day suspension and $750 fine. There's no new information here. Councilmember Budishevsky was the council member that was not at the meeting, so if there's any information that you would like to have, I would say if the council wanted to take, you know, up to 10 minutes, each minute 15 seconds or something, to kind of just state your position, and then go from there. There's no new information, as I said. Miss Hope is here again tonight. That's, that's it.
Would you like her to come up and chat with you at all?
She can. I, you pretty much know my stance.
I do, totally.
On liquor, tobacco, vaping, THC products, and our ordinances here with the city. I have stated many, an opportunity that we work in partnership with the owners of such businesses, and we expect them to follow our regulations to a T. And so I, my position would be that of a $750 fine and a one-day suspension, and that would, that's my position. And I've spoke at length about underage sales to individuals in our community, and I'm, I think it's very important that we, as a council, staunchly support our administrative penalties on such regulated products.
Anybody else have a comment? Well, you know, I too really sincerely believe that they, there should not be any violations, period. But I also know in my heart that sometimes mistakes happen, and I don't know that a one-size-fits-all fine and suspension works. It doesn't in my heart, anyway. And so I know where you're coming from. I respect your thoughts. But I just want the residents to know, too, that I, I, I just, because they don't serve food, this is their only means of making an income, and I think it's a too severe of a penalty. That's where I stand, but not everybody agrees with me, so.
Again, Mayor, we've spent hours, you know, in discussion and work sessions about our administrative penalties. I, you know, I have told you in the past, you and I have served on this council for a long time, and we used to have a situation where of, there was a violation, we stuck to the 700, you know, the, the fine and the one-day suspension, and they never came back. And when we got to a situation where we were actually like, we kind of felt sorry for them, and we kind of, you know, kind of like adjusted our, our, our penalty to kind of like, you know, to help, you know, them feel better, we feel better, they were back a second and third time. And we are now to a point now where, I guess, we, we're allowed by the state to have such licenses issued. We work with our police department to make sure that they develop a program to be able to effectively manage the regulations by going out and doing a compliance check. We let the businesses know that we're coming, and we, we are, they're aware of it, and yet they, they only fail one time. I, I have a hard time with that, so that, I'm, it's, I'm not going to change my stance.
Right.
On this whole thing. And the goal is, you know, we, as a city, are trying to change the culture within this industry to make sure that there isn't any underage sales. And my concern is, is that once individuals who are under 21 realize that a business is not checking IDs, that it all of a sudden opens up a wellspring, and they're going there in droves. And that's my greatest concern. So I'm not going to change my stance on this, you know how, I've, I've preached this for the last 13 years. And I am, I am ready to make a motion now, if nobody else has any more comments, and we can move forward from there.
All right. You're going to make a motion?
I will make a motion, yeah.
For the 750 and the one-day suspension.
Yep.
Anybody else want to second that?
Would you, would you like me to say that first, or do you want me to read it into the record, or?
Read it into the record.
All right. I make a motion that based on the staff report, including the findings contained therein and the other information presented regarding this matter, that a penalty of $750 and a one-day license suspension be imposed in this case.
Tracy?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. No call.
Mayor Dashler.
Nay.
Councilmember Idbo.
Aye.
Councilmember Kamish.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Nay.
Councilmember Onessa Rosen.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Nay.
Motion carries four to three.
Okay. Case closed. And then you'll be getting ahold of the business owner shortly to work out a...
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, sounds good. All right, next item, 5.2, the Council will consider resolutions approving the preliminary 2026 budget and property tax levies, and setting the date for the truth and taxation public input hearing. And I believe that our Assistant Finance Director, Jody, is it Burschime?
Jody Burschime, correct.
She's going to address the council about the budget.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are asking council to take action on the following items. First, to approve the 2026 proposed general fund budget and tax levies. Second, to set the date for the budget hearing. And finally, to adopt the EDA proposed budget and tax levy. Tonight, we'll cover the following. A quick review of our budget goals. An overview of the budget timeline. A reminder of the city's achievements for 2024 and 2025. The impacts on the 2026 budget. A list of changes from the 2025 to the 2026 budget. A summary of the general fund and expenditure breakdown. The proposed property tax levy and its impacts. An overview of the EDA budget. And finally, we'll seek council approval for the proposed budget and tax levies, set a date for the budget hearing, and adopt the EDA budget and tax levy. You worked the first one?
Worked once.
So a brief, one before that, John, thank you. A brief recap of the budget goals are to meet community service demands and legislative mandates.
Is that the right one?
No, sorry, go back. There you go. Thank you. So again, a brief recap of the budget goals are to meet the community service demands and legislative mandates, address the City Council's strategic priorities, continue financial planning with the two-year budget plan with the focus on 2026, invest in capital, future capital needs, offer competitive wages and benefits to attract and retain quality staff, and to respond to economic challenges. So here's a quick overview of the budget timeline. We have six more meetings, including tonight. Tonight, we'll consider the preliminary adoption of the general fund, EDA budgets, and the property tax levies, and receive public input, like I mentioned earlier. On October 7th, there will be an additional opportunity for public input, and on December 2nd, council will consider the final budget and tax levies. Before we dive into this year's new budget, let's take a moment to reflect on last year's achievements supported by the previous budget. While I won't go into detail on every accomplishment individually, this is just a list of a great reminder of what the city has achieved over the past year. So let's take a look at the key budget impacts for 2026. There are some staffing requests that are proposed for the following. Within community development, a building and commercial inspector is being proposed. Within the police department, an additional officer, a victim advocate, which is offset by elimination of the Tubman contract, and then a part-time community service officer. And for forestry, a shared part-time forester is being proposed, which is offset by eliminating a shared resource with New Hope. So of the 478 new wages, the net cost within this budget is 361,000 after those offsets. The budget also includes planned increases for wages, benefits, and insurance costs to retain quality people to provide the city services, and increases to the internal service funds for continued investment in capital projects. You can also see that the services and contracts increase primarily by the increase in cost for fire services. There are some miscellaneous increases for supplies and contingencies, and then the continued investment in building reserves in the general fund to ensure a solid foundation in that fund. Overall, this budget reflects the city's commitment to strategic growth and financial responsibility, ensuring the city can meet the needs of the community now and in the future. This slide identifies changes in both revenues and expenditures between the 2025 budget and the proposed 2026 budget, and as you can see, we are projecting approximately a $3 million increase in the overall general fund budget. And I know this slide's a little small, so this will be posted on the website, too. This slide provides a summary of the revenue and expenditures as compared to the previous year's budget, and as you can see, property taxes is the largest source of revenue for the general fund, and public safety is the largest area for expenditures. The overall increase from 2025 is 13% compared to the increase in the prior year of 12%. This pie chart illustrates the budget allocation, within, with the largest portion, 46%, dedicated to public safety, underscoring the commitment to ensuring the well-being and security of the community. Public Works receives 21% of the budget, highlighting the focus on maintaining and improving infrastructure, while Recreation is allocated 13%, reflecting our investment in community wellness and leisure activities. Presented here is the levy over the past years to give you a reference point. This year's proposed levy reflects the request discussed tonight, resulting in a proposed increase of 15.87% from last year. And just a reminder, Crystal does not have street assessments or franchise fees, and once other communities adopt their preliminary levy, we'll provide that comparison. We'll bring that back. So how does this affect the taxpayer? At the top of the slide, we highlight the levy increases we just discussed, and considering the slight increase in tax capacity, this will result in a tax rate increase of approximately 12%. In the bottom section of this slide, you can see the estimated annual increases for various home values, giving a snapshot of the changes of property at different values amidst current value trends. With the levy increase, the typical homeowner can expect an annual increase for ongoing investment in city services, but this annual increase converts to a monthly increase ranging from about $14 to $28, depending on the home value. It's important to remember that individual properties may see a little smaller, maybe a little larger change, as the tax impact figures are preliminary, so as the county refines their data, we'll be updating these figures. As for the EDA, proposed levy increase is more significant this year, bringing the levy to the statutory maximum amount to support anticipated future projects from the Town Center Vision Plan and the Comprehensive Community Vision Plan. This slide outlines the expenditure category amounts for each of the years identified for the EDA. And this next slide shows the anticipated changes to the reserves with that additional investment. So to wrap up the presentation, just a reminder that tonight we are asking council to approve the proposed budget and levies for both the city and the EDA, as well as set the public hearing date for December 2nd. We do have October 7th listed as an additional opportunity for the public to provide input. And I also want to mention that after tonight's approval, council can't increase the levy, but they can reduce the levy before December 2nd, which is the date when council will provide final approval of the proposed budgets and levies. And with that, we have staff here to answer questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
This includes the new positions that we talked about at the work session, all of them?
It does.
Okay.
It's been around with us many times in meetings.
Yeah, I basically was going to reiterate that, that we spend a good portion of the year talking about the budget, talking about the financial stability of the city, and we have a lot of discussions about the need as well. It's... It's, everything is looked at two or three times and debated. And, you know, we want to make sure that we put forth a solid budget plan for the upcoming year, but also make sure that the needs and the services of the city are met. And it's, it's not something that we treat lightly. We have worked very hard together as a team to come up with information, as well as the information that we've received from city staff. Last year, we did approve a new budgetary software program that is very helpful in terms of putting together this year's budget. Up until then, we did everything on Excel spreadsheets. And it was cumbersome, in a lot of cases, very inaccurate. And if there were changes to a specific cell, it ran through departments and could create a lot of havoc. So with the new budgetary software system, we feel that our numbers are much more true. We also feel that we are also, we're recouping funds for our general fund because we, in the past, had a policy of paying for everything with cash. And we had depleted our general fund reserves to the point of where, during the audit of our, of our, of our annual audit, that the auditors would question if we had enough money on hand to be able to pay the bills of the city. And so we did come up with a plan to be able to deal with that issue. And as a result, we are on that track now to getting ourselves to the point where we have a financially stable city. And I know it's tough. I mean, and I, and don't get me wrong. I mean, government is expensive. The equipment that we use is expensive. You know, we hire quality people who do a great job. And we don't expect them to work for minimum wage. And we, I mean, we talked about it tonight a little bit. The police department is one of the finest in the state. Our fire department has done such a good job that the actual rating for the, for the fire department has improved to the point where it does affect your homeowner's insurance. And it will reduce homeowner insurance rates. And so those are things that we look at in terms of a council and make sure that, that those services that we're providing as a city as a whole, that you're able to, let's just take snowplowing for instance, that you're able to get out of your driveway and get to the main road to be able to get to your job and not have to worry about being, you know, plowed in, that's essential to us, making sure that we have a quality recycling program that, that not only takes care of the recycling on a bi-weekly basis, but every, every other year that we're, we're basically have like a, how would you say it? Like that, like a boulevard cleanup, where you can put anything out on your boulevard and we pick it up so that we don't have these trash homes. So those are, we look at the city every time we get together in terms of how we can get, do things better. Today, we had a presentation regarding backyard ducks. And the mayor and I, 10 years ago, worked on backyard chickens. And also, we have an ordinance that, you know, supports bees as well. So we do listen to the needs of the community. And we make sure that we are vetting those needs. We're not just willy-nilly working through things. But we're also planning for the future of the city. It's not, you know, this, this, this goal of ours is to make sure that the city is a, the city is a destination, location. The people who come here want to stay here. I mean, I moved here 28 years ago. And I didn't think I was going to be here 28 years later. I thought I was going to be here just for a short time. But it has everything that I need to feel not only safe in the city, but also feel welcomed, and also feel that this is an environment that is healthy for me as well. Just, I, I, I know I'm sounding like I'm running on, but I just want to tell you how proud I am of the city and proud to be part of the, of the, of the process. And also, we go out and talk to our constituents. We're always looking for ways in which we can improve that communication information. And we bring that information back to the city. And this is part of the budgeting process. And so I understand that, you know, things may feel stressful when it comes to the levy itself. I understand that. But I want you to know that we are concerned and we care about how you feel as individuals in our community. We also want to make sure you feel welcome. But we want to also make sure that we can pay our bills. And ultimately, I want to thank everybody on the council for their work and their input. And at this point, I'll shut her down. Thank you very much.
You know, I, my apologies for having to leave, but I got a tickle in my throat and I just couldn't stop from coughing. Hopefully, it's gone. But did, did you share that the ballpark, the average homeowner in Crystal, the increase they'll see for the bottom line is $19.50? I didn't hear that out there. I just, you know, just to kind of put it in some kind of perspective for what people are going to have to pull out of their wallet.
Yeah, the slide is up on the screen right now.
Okay, okay, all right.
The amount that, you'll see the annual amount listed there, but the monthly amount is between $14 and $28. And that, of course, will vary depending on home values. It could be a little bit more, a little bit less, but that's the average.
I think that's what kind of people want to know, is what kind of, what are they going to feel in their pocketbook? And really, one of the questions last week that I had asked is, if our fund balance reserve wasn't below where it really should be, you know, what would our property tax levy would, would be? And that would be more in the 8 to what, 10% range? We're just simply trying to claw our way back into a more healthy, comfortable cushion. And we're not in danger. We've got money to pay the bills. I don't want people to think that we're that low. But we just need to get in a little bit more comfy level, as my grandparents would say. They have a little extra money in the bank for a rainy day. So.
I think Tajie might have his figure up first.
Yeah, just a couple additional comments. You know, the 15.87 increase percent, I don't think is that helpful. What is more helpful is the $14 to $28 that Jody shared. And I think it's important for the community to know that even with this 15.87% increase, Crystal is still one of the most affordable places to live in our area. And it's, it's hard to kind of compare apples to apples with our neighboring communities and all the taxes that kind of feed into your average homeowner. But we pride ourselves on transparency. All of our taxes are bundled up into this levy. And so I just want folks to be aware that, you know, we are affordable and we are committed to remaining affordable. And so, as has been said, we are trying to kind of make up for, I don't know about lost time, but, but we're trying to get ourselves in a more comfy position and really set ourselves up for kind of ongoing financial stability. I think it's important for the community to know also that I think this council and this staff is becoming more, I would say, efficient and focused in how we invest and how we think about the future. Our council has established some pretty meaningful strategic goals over the next three years. And also, will embark on a longer-term vision for the community so that we can think, you know, further out, plan more accordingly, and spread things out over time. And so I think you're only going to see this, this council become even more kind of efficient with, with the dollars that we have. And so I just, again, I don't want the 15.87 to be alarming. I don't think it's like a super helpful data point as we think about the big picture. As, over the coming months, I expect that we'll have some, maybe more comparisons for our neighboring communities, just so that residents really understand the impact. So know that we don't take this lightly. This will probably be the largest percentage compared to our neighboring communities, but there's a larger story here, and we'll continue to tell that story as best we can.
Yeah, and I just want to, and you know, part of the reason why, if you're, if you're watching on at home, we're not like asking a bunch of questions about all these numbers, is because, as John mentioned, we've been spending many, many late hours talking this budget out through staff. And so this is something that we've all worked really hard on. Staff has worked very hard on. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of the things that were in the slideshow that I think are really important. And that is just, you know, we're adding staff and priorities that aren't just shoring up our financial stability as like a base level, but it's also building Crystal to be ready for the next 20 years, right? I think one of the things that I heard, I heard a lot when I was door knocking, and I hear a lot when I talk with residents, is this fear that, you know, Crystal is going to turn into a city that is kind of like broken, right? Or it's like, all the businesses are going to leave, and all the neighborhoods are going to go bad and stuff. And nobody on staff, nobody on council is ever going to let that happen. And part of our budget here is an investment to ensure that we're ready for the challenges of not just today, but also for the next 20 years. And you're going to see that really ramp up, as Tajie mentioned, here in the next three years, as we're looking at what's our vision, what's our future. And, you know, things like, it doesn't sound very, you know, attractive, the building and commercial inspector, whoa, well, that's, that doesn't sound really exciting. But it really is, because it means a bunch of things. One, it means we're going to be able to ensure that our commercial districts are maintained and attractive. Where police, people want to shop, people want to spend their time, businesses feel proud of their places that they are. And then also means that we're able to provide better service to new businesses as they come in and build out property here in Crystal. Really a critical thing that, that I'm very excited about. Adding additional staff and resources to our police department to make it more efficient, more, be able to serve the, the community and be prepared for different challenges that our, that our police departments are facing. And then, three, I think nobody is surprised to hear that forestry is a big issue for me, since my name is Forrest. But also, if you look out your window, it's, it's a big issue as well, right? We have tons of dead trees. We have city blocks with no trees at all. How are we going to face that so that that doesn't impact our property value, impact our community? And so we're investing in that by having a staff that's going to be looking at that. And, and we're going to be efficient about it. We're sharing it with, you know, Brooklyn Center. So I just want to point out, we're not just building up our fund balance and making sure that we're ready today financially, but we're also ready for the next 20 years, too. So I'm, I'm very excited about this budget. I want to say thank you to staff and council as well, so.
Any other comments? Well said. Thank you for sharing your thoughts, everybody. All right, who would like to make the motion? John?
I can do that. Turn on my mic here. I make a motion approving a resolution approving the 2026 proposed Economic Development Authority Property Tax Levy.
I'll second that. I'm just going to make sure there wasn't any other comments. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Next one, you want to just keep going?
Yep. I make a motion for a resolution approving the 2026 general fund budget, the 2026 preliminary property tax levy, and setting the public input date for the 2026 budget and preliminary property tax levy.
Do you want to second it? I can second it again if you want. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution passes. All right, our next item, 5.3, is the city council will consider a resolution approving a conditional use permit, CUP, for expansion of Early Steps Learning Foundation at 6122 42nd Avenue North. Our Community Development Director, John Sutter, will be taking the lead on this one.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So thank you again for the introduction. And this is a fairly straightforward item for a childcare, existing childcare in Brunswick United Methodist Church to expand. They were issued a conditional use permit in 2016 for up to 55 children. They are now requesting a CUP amendment to increase the number to 72. They are not expanding the footprint of the building, and they are not making any changes to the site. So this 2024 aerial photo you see of the property, there would not be any external, exterior changes to what you see there. So nine employees, hours of operation, pretty typical for childcare, 6 to 6, Monday through Friday. They will continue to be picked up and dropped off in the north parking lot. And we do not have any parking concerns because the church and the daycare kind of operate at opposite hours, so. So on September 8th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, and Early Steps was represented there, but no one from the public testified or had any questions. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended that you approve the CUP amendment with the conditions in the staff report. And so that is the action requested of the council tonight.
Does anybody have any questions? Tracy?
How many teachers do they currently have with 55 kids?
I apologize, I don't know that.
So we don't know if they're increasing staff to make a proportional?
We do not. I, I do not know.
Okay.
I got a couple grand kiddies in daycare. And isn't the state licensed this? Or, I mean, I'm surprised that we would need to get involved in this.
So it's really two different things. It's a great question. It's two different things for two different purposes, right? So this is a land use action. Is the land use appropriate for the property and in compliance with our city code? That's a question before you tonight. The licensing of childcare is indeed a state authority and responsibility. We have no role in that whatsoever. We have no legal authority. And so the state looks at student-teacher ratios and all those kinds of things.
That's what I thought, so.
Can, can I just make one point that came up in the Planning Commission here? One thing that, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, the land use, they're kind of setting at like the highest level that they can. But the license, like when they go through the state and license it, I think it's going to be a little bit less than that. But the idea is maybe in three or four years, they will go up to 72. It just makes more sense to set the land use at the highest, and then they'll figure out licensing on an annual basis because it's an annual license, so.
That's a good point. I apologize for not bringing that up. The, it did specifically come up in the discussion that I think the actual number of students right now, the intent is to get a license for somewhere in the low 60s.
Okay.
Mid 60s in terms of number of students. But there's a kind of a theoretical physical capacity in the building for up to 72. And so rather than come back every time they want to ratchet up the license, they just went right to 72. And again, from a land use perspective, 72 is completely appropriate for this property.
Right, okay. All right, any further discussion? Anybody like to make a motion? Forrest?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I will move a resolution approving a conditional use permit for the expansion of Early Steps Learning Foundation at 6122 42nd Avenue North.
All right, Tracy?
I can second that.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Next item is an interim ordinance modifying the zoning moratorium in the TC and TC-PD districts. And John Sutter, would you like to take that away?
Yes, thanks again, Madam Mayor. So if you recall from the August 19th discussion, clearly, there were kind of two schools of thought emerging among the council members about if, if, if it was appropriate to remove parts of the moratorium or reduce the moratorium area by eliminating certain areas from the moratorium, about which areas should be eliminated. Or none at all is another option, as I think I pointed out in the staff report. So there really are three choices that we have prepared for you. We have prepared a version of the ordinance. Option one, that would remove areas A and B, the northwest and northeast edges of the moratorium area, from the zoning moratorium. That means that development projects, anything requiring a zoning approval could proceed in those areas that are removed. And while the rest of the moratorium goes on for as long as, can end sooner, it could end sooner, but it can't go any later than June 3rd of 2026. So that's option one. And there's an ordinance in your packet that would do that. Option two is areas A, B, and C. So northwest, northeast, and southeast edges of the moratorium area would be removed from the moratorium. And again, zoning approvals could then be considered in those areas without having to wait for the moratorium to end on June 3rd of next year. And then, of course, option three, which I didn't state here, but option three is to take no action to amend the moratorium, in which case, it all stays as it is currently. So with that... So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions from the council, and it's up to the council to decide whether to proceed with either option one or option two.
Or option three.
Or option, unnumbered option three, which is no action at all. And you don't need to, I'm sorry, you do not need to take a motion for that. You just don't take action on either of the two proposed ordinances.
So, with our current moratorium, regardless of how we vote tonight, the, the consultant will still look at all those areas in terms of, so there will be a evaluation of A, B, and C included in the, in the evaluation?
Yes, that's a great question, or a great point, and I should emphasize that, that the Town Center Vision Plan will still include the entire Town Center area. What would be determined by your action on either option one or option two is that removing certain areas from the moratorium would not negatively impact your ability to plan for the future through the Town Center Vision Plan process. You'll still be studying those areas as part of that process.
Forrest?
But if, but if I may, it does have the risk, albeit maybe minor, maybe not, that while we study it, the actual realization of whatever is proposed may be greatly delayed by, you know, somebody coming in and investing in a land use that isn't what is recommended in the plan.
Yeah, that is a very fair statement, it is not a risk-free decision. Staff opinion is that the risk is relatively low, but it is a risk, and we want you to be cognizant of that.
So, on this map that is up here, where is, for instance, Walgreens? I should know this, cuz I live up there, but.
Walgreens is right here at the northwest corner of Bassett Road and Broadway, so we are not proposing by any means that that be removed from the moratorium area.
Okay, and how about like the vacant Wells Fargo?
That is in Area A, is this site right here.
The far west part of.
Far west end of the, it's actually the, the New Hope border is the western edge of the Wells Fargo site.
So, I don't know what could be, you know, I, I guess I live over here in this area over here, west of that. I don't know that there's any open land there.
Madam Mayor, again, the risk is low for the, for the, for these areas. I think that's the rationale why we brought this to you. But there is risk that somebody could apply for something that meets our code, so you can't deny it while you're looking at planning and changing the code. That's the reason you do zoning moratoriums, is to freeze everything while you plan and potentially change the code. If it's not in the moratorium area, they could propose something that meets your current code, but does not meet where you're trying to take the code. That's the risk, small as we think it may be, it is a risk.
Oh goodness.
Tracy?
In Area C, how many of, how many businesses are in that block? And how many are actually functioning as a business as opposed to closed down or currently open?
I don't know if any of the buildings are vacant. There are, the two southerly properties are on the market, but I don't know if the businesses in them are actually shut down, they might be a lease situation. Other than those two southerly properties, which comprise maybe a third of Area C, the rest of it are all, are all thriving businesses that staff does not think there's any likelihood of change.
How, how long have they been for sale? Like, has it been long-term for sale or recent?
I don't know exactly, but I would say with less than a year, they went on the market, the two southerly parcels.
Don't we have a developer coming in, what, next month to talk about the Wells Fargo site? So, they're not going to start developing if the moratorium is there, correct?
I, that's a, well, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, so that, that's a, that's a fair statement. They may or may not wait around for the moratorium to expire, but they have said to you directly in, in a recent work session, and said to staff again today, that if the moratorium for Area A is lifted, that they intend to submit their zoning and other applications so that they can get presumably their approvals over the winter and start construction in 2026. So, they have said that multiple times in multiple venues, that is their intent. Obviously, if the moratorium is still in, in effect over Area A, they would not be able to proceed with their zoning applications until potentially as late as June of 2026, which probably would mean a 2027 construction start.
Tajee, or, I, I'm sorry, I don't know who was first.
No, no, go ahead, I'm ready.
I'm trying to figure out how much of the, this is just like, between option one and two, this is just like the council's discretion, I mean, of course, it's the council's discretion, but like, is the rationale, so the only change between one and two is Section 3, or Area, or Area C? And so, the idea is if the council feels like, yes, that should be lifted and allow for, yeah, not be a part of the moratorium so that development could happen there maybe sooner than later, or not? Like, is that ultimately what, what we're, and I'm just trying to understand, like, the rationale, and I brought this up last time, but the rationale is just, we're saying, well, I don't know. I'm just trying to understand the, the justification for making these, this potential change, because it's not as if they're in my mind like low risk, like things are potentially happening with A and C. And so, I'm not sure how, do I make my decision based on those potential things in A and C? Or is there something more fundamental that I should be anchoring my decision in?
Madam Mayor, councilmember, if I can answer that. So, yeah, that, that is, that's most, mostly what the real question here is. Each of these areas is a little different, though, and that's why, and that's what we kinda talked about before. Area A, I mean, we have a real live development proposal for something that our understanding was the council's wanted. And it would be broadly consistent with what is likely to emerge from the Town Center Vision Plan. So, there'd be no reason to keep that area in the moratorium because the development proposal is, again, consistent with what many, if not all of you, have said you want to see in the Town Center. Area B is two very new medical office buildings. The Town Center Vision Plan probably is not going to propose any changes, and they're probably not gonna make any changes, so there's no reason for it to be in the moratorium. Area C, the reason to take it out is that it is not right up by the light rail station, and it's kind of today anyway, kind of a dead-end industrial area, dead-end physically, not financially. It's a cul-de-sac, right? It's kind of all, all by itself. But you can flip that, though, and say, well, that's today. And the counterargument to say, keep it in the moratorium, is our Town Center Vision Plan may decide that that area, because it is such a short, direct walk to the light rail platform without having to cross any major barriers to get to the light rail platform, that things can change, and the way we think things are going to be forever, it may not be that way, and that light rail would really be a game changer because east of the BNSF corridor, it's, the light rail station's right there. So, that would be the reason to leave Area C in the moratorium because you want to have a chance to study, to come up with a vision plan and determine what changes you wanna make to the zoning before anything happens there. And, and just, I think the findings for each, maybe a short version of what I just said, is in each of the respective ordinances.
So, you know, for myself, I am for lifting it for Area A and B. So, is that an option?
That's option one.
Yes, that's option one. Yep, whoops, sorry.
Maybe I looked at it so much, I was starting to get dizzy. Okay, yeah, okay. I like option one, then. Oh, I'm sorry.
What if we lifted it for Area C and nobody came in? And, and when the moratorium gets lifted next June, it's the same that it is now? The same businesses are there? That's very possible, right?
Yeah.
Yes, it, it, the only, the only question is, in the interim period, while the moratorium is in effect for the rest of the Town Center, while you're doing your vision plan and considering zoning ordinance changes, someone comes in for a proposal that meets your current code, so you sort of have to approve it, but it actually isn't consistent with the direction you're going with the vision plan. That's, that would be the reason not to remove it from the moratorium because by June 3rd of next year, you should have your vision plan done and your new zoning changes, whatever those are gonna be, in effect, that's the goal, anyway. And so, it stops everything until you have those things in place.
So, you know how I feel about pawn shops? Don't like them. And so, if a pawn shop decided to come and build it back in there, are we currently zoned for that? Could they do it?
They're permitted use, so they do not need any zoning approval.
Oh, wow, then I know that just seals my answer.
But you, you could, as part of your zoning study, decide, I don't know, to a, a bill, how, how much ability cities have to simply prohibit pawn shops through their zoning, but, for example, if you wanted to do something like that, the zoning study, the Town Center Vision Plan and the zoning changes that come out of that, what we're collectively calling the zoning study, is an opportunity to rethink things like that. To rethink things like our pretty open zoning code in terms of permitted uses.
Tracy?
So, June 3rd, when we've got our vision plan done and everything, our study is done, there's gonna be something that says, this is all that's allowed in this area, is that correct? Like, we're gonna have total control within parameters of what goes in any of these areas?
Yes, that's correct, our goal is to have the vision plan done around the end of the year, and then the first quarter of 2026 is to work on the potential changes to the zoning map or the zoning regulations so that those are considered, adopted, and in effect by June 3rd, when the moratorium expires, that's the goal.
I'm looking at this picture, and I can't imagine. It's just, sorry, the word I come up with is ugly, I'm sorry, but I think we need.
Can you show John what you're looking at?
What?
John, can you just show John what you're looking at?
Oh, he saw it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you didn't see it, sorry. It's just an aerial photo of this, of Area C.
Which, which location?
Area C.
Oh, Area C, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
That one was a new apartment building, Madison.
Yeah.
No, that's Area C, though.
No, that's, that's a, that's a figment of imagination, that's not real.
That's a, you know, possibility.
It's a lovely drawing, but really, we're gonna go from this to this? If you can find somebody that would wanna do that, more power to you, I just, I can't imagine it.
Did you create this? Can you speak to?
Yeah, so, so just for people that are in the audience, I, I, I do some aerial photography, and I just took some aerial photos of Area C. And then I had it mocked up with what it would look like with some row houses. Yeah, I would just say, sorry, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna stop what you, I didn't wanna inter. I think every, everybody that was here for the last work session where we discussed this is pretty aware of my feelings. I think that Area C has a lot of potential for long-term housing development just because of its proximity to the future light rail station and the walkability of that. It's, it's in kind of part of the prime walk shed from the light rail station. I would say, it's a shame that we haven't gone on our development tour yet. I think that there's some really good examples along the Green Line corridor of areas that you would say there would never, you could never build an apartment building here, it doesn't make any sense, and, you know, if there's market demand, it, it can happen. And I would say that this area is actually pretty prime for some medium-to-high-density residential because it is kinda sleepy down there. I mean, yes, there is a rail line there that is moderately active, and then one that's not very active at all. But I've seen sites with much more active rail corridors with very nice housing developed there. I would also say, having been down there, and I, I spent probably an hour down there, it's actually pretty quiet, you don't really hear the 81. It's, I, for whatever reason, the way the acoustics work, it just kinda goes over. So, I would say that really, in terms of sites for, I'm not a developer, obviously, but I've seen many examples of sites that have developed into housing that are way harder to develop. I mean, I don't really know what the contamination is there, if there is any, who knows? Like, there might be things that make it even harder. But I would say you look at most of those sites, those are pretty old warehouse buildings. And I'd say they're, they're ripe for redevelopment, once the Blue Line comes in, cuz it's gonna be putting a lot more demand and possibly make, obviously, the Blue Line might not happen at all, so, but yeah.
Well, even if we lift the moratorium on, on Area C, the developer still might come through at some point in the future, that's not saying that won't happen.
I, so my, so my point of view on which, which of the two ordinances to adopt would be, why risk it? Because if, if the, if the argument is, well, it might just stay the same, well, then we should just keep it in the moratorium, because then it, we know it will stay the same, and we will have the opportunity to redevelop it. The risk, and I would agree with, with John, it's, it's relatively low risk that it will happen during this period, this study period. But the building is for sale, we could see things happen. We could end up with something there that locks that use in for, who knows, decades? And we had the opportunity to change it, but we just decided to not take it out of the moratorium because we wanted to just roll the dice. I don't really understand why we would take it out, personally, it seems like, yeah.
Well, I don't understand why you would take out B, or why B is even considered, if it's, if, if it.
I would agree, I mean, I think B is a moot point, I mean, it, it really doesn't change either way cuz it's like, it's fully developed, right? So, it's like, they're not looking for any land use changes, and we're not looking to change that area. So, it's kinda like, functionally, it's the same whether it's in or out of the moratorium area?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I would agree with that. I think there is less uncertainty with B than there is with C because there are two properties actively being marketed in C, and we don't know who might buy it and what they want, might wanna do with it in terms of changing it in a direction that would be contrary to whatever your Town Center Vision Plan ends up saying for that area.
John, you've been doing this a long, long time, how likely is it that those, I mean, is, can you give us a ballpark? A, a, an industrial building like that for sale, can't that be on the market for a long period of time?
They may or may not be, it, it's, it, it's sort of like commercial property, but more so in that there's a much smaller pool of buyers. And so, a, a building, you might have the right buyer that wants the building, and they're ready to go, and you might have it sit on the market for years because they don't find the right buyer, so. What I will say is that it stays in the moratorium, all that does is delay any zoning approvals until the new codes are in effect and the moratorium ends in June of next year. moratorium ends in June of next year. And at that point, let's say nothing happens, the current businesses can continue indefinitely. But the, the risk, so to speak, is that something comes in there while you're doing your zoning study, and they're allowed to make major investments in the property that entrench that use, while you want, and then at the end of the zoning study, you've decided you want to change the vision for that area. Now you have something that's kind of in the way for decades of what you've decided your vision is. That's the risk.
But you also said, more than once, the risk is pretty low. That's the consensus among the staff?
I would say it's relatively low.
Okay, thank you.
But, sorry, I, but it's a risk you don't need to take.
That's my thought, too.
That's what I keep coming back to.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a low risk.
But what's the benefit?
I'm sorry, being kind of conversational here, but it's a low risk, but, okay, but it's not, it's not a risk you need to take. Those existing industrial uses, as long as they don't need any conditional use permits or anything, they can, they can sell their building to another user that does the same thing that's always been done there, but they won't be able to further entrench that industrial use with the moratorium in place. But it's not preventing them from selling their building, it's not preventing them from finding another user that's similar to the current user. That all can happen, even if you change your code, even if the moratorium's in place, until you change the code.
If that would happen, the new tenants or the new property owners would be paying property taxes at twice the rate of a single-family home, right? And significantly higher than a multifamily home, right? Is it industrial property tax at the highest level?
Yeah, the industrial rate's generally two and a half times the homestead rate, roughly.
Well, that's significant, too.
But there's a, there's the rate, and then there's the property value, right? So there's, those are, those two things together, combined, and I would argue, and you, John and Adam can disagree, but I would argue that if that was redeveloped into multifamily housing, that would increase the property value way more than if somebody improved the existing light industrial use. And therefore, even at that lower tax rate, the tax capacity would be much higher. It, I mean, it's all speculative, because we don't have any proposals or anything, but...
Another factor is what type of multifamily.
Right.
If it's a 4D, then it's a quarter.
Yeah, that's true, too.
So, those are kind of the two ends. The, I think it's one and a quarter for regular multifamily.
But I would say, it just goes back to, it's a risk we don't need to take, because it can keep doing what it's doing at its current tax rate, but then we also have the opportunity to re-envision it as something, maybe, in the future. And while it may be a 10% chance, a low chance that it does get invested in, I mean, that's a 10% chance that we aren't able to do something with, what I would argue, a very critical piece of Crystal property. And I would also just say, interest rates are changing right now, and I would, and we're probably going to start seeing just economics starting to shift in development over the next, like, eight months. So, people might start coming in and start poking around in a bigger way than they have over the last year.
You're so passionate about this. I mean, do you know somebody that wants to go back there, or what?
No. I don't. I, yeah, I don't know.
Because it is so industrially back there, I can't even fathom it would be attractive.
Yeah, I can't imagine residential property back there.
I'm just curious, what is the easement on each side of the railway? What do they own?
Uh, 50 feet either side of the center of the tracks.
Okay.
The center line of the tracks.
Okay.
So it's 100-foot wide right away for both railroads. And that's not, I mean, it's, you can kind of see it here. That's a 100-foot wide corridor.
John?
Okay, so, we have a potential, well, proposal for the old Wells Fargo site. You know, that's a no-brainer, right? So, in the future, if there was someone that came to us and said, like, hey, I would like to do XYZ in, in C, and would we be able to revisit and do the exact same thing with our moratorium at that time, like, as such as what we're doing today?
I think the attorney had told us that might be a little not appropriate. Do it all at once, or don't do it? Or did I misconstrue the message?
I'm not sure. I, can you repeat the question?
My question is, is, so, obviously, we want to remove the moratorium for, for A, because we have a potential proposal incoming for redevelopment of the old Wells Fargo site. Great, we're all in agreement on that. Let's say that's all we do, and then sometime in the future, someone else comes to us and says, yes, I want to do some potential development in, in C, would we be able to do a similar removal of the moratorium, so that we'd be able to allow them to provide a proposal and potentially build in that area?
Anytime you amend the moratorium, you amend it because you no longer need to restrict what's in that area. So you let it be developed as it is, which doesn't mean that you can't change it when you go through the whole process, but that will just allow whatever the use is now to continue and, and not wait until the study is continued. So the same factual findings you're making now, hypothetically, if you pulled Area A out, we have findings for Area B and Area C. If you determine later that, no, we do want to pull that out, you could still do that on this basis. You can wait and do those later.
Madam Mayor, the, the potential findings for Area C, which is a city attorney pointed out, you could come back to those at some future point, are in ordinance for Option Two.
For what?
The ordinance for Option Two, if I recall correctly, has the findings for each of the areas that would be pulled out of the moratorium by that option. So there should be...
So we could just say we want to just do Area A for now? See, that's where my disconnect is.
Well, we did not prepare an ordinance for that. But if you look at, at Option Two, right in the middle of the first page, there's bullets one, two, and three.
Yep.
That, those are the findings. For Option One, it's just bullets one and two.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, we can do ordinance one, which is A and B, and then in December, come back and do the findings?
For C.
For C.
I think that's fair, because the findings are already written. You just, it just depends on what a majority of the council wants to do tonight.
Okay. I'm, I, I feel really good about doing A, especially if we can come back and see.
Any disagreement?
I disagree. I feel like if we're going to lift it for A, lift it for all three sections, A, B, and C.
Well...
Should we make a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion approving Option Two.
Does anybody want to second it?
I'll second that motion.
For A, B, and C?
Yeah.
To lift them all?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any further discussion?
So just to be clear, this is for A, B, and C, all three?
Right.
What you're looking at on the screen, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Okay, roll call. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Heiple.
Nay.
Councilmember Cameron.
Nay.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Onasorosa.
Nay.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Nay.
Councilmember Cumming.
Nay.
Mayor.
Nay.
Motion carries.
All right, I'm going to make a motion that we will lift the moratorium on Area A.
And only A?
Option one. Is that an option?
Option one, but just parcel A for now.
So remove the findings for B.
Remove the findings for B and C.
I have a question for the city attorney. So, normally, with the normal ordinance, there's a first reading and second reading. This is kind of change you could make between, at first reading, that would be reflected in second reading. This ordinance is immediately effective. Can we amend it, can we, how do we do this?
I could change it to A and B.
Option one.
I don't have any heartburn.
Well, I only ask because, you know, we, we could rewrite this to just be Area A, but that isn't the ordinances in your packet, because we had not previously heard that there was interest in that. So that would delay this till October 7th. I, I believe, unless, there's a way to kind of amend this on the fly tonight.
I'm going to just make a motion. I'm changing my motion, if that's okay. Removing my previous motion.
If, if we can do it that way, I would support what you propose, if, if it's not too much of a lift for you, though.
What I'm do, I'm just consulting your charter, and I'm seeing if there's a, there's any limitation in your ability to a change, change at the second reading. In general, when it comes to public notice about ordinances, as long as the general topic is, is published and sort of open for discussion in a public way, making amendments at the second reading are okay. But I'm checking your charter, so give me a few minutes.
And, and in this case, there is no second reading. It's an interim ordinance, so it's just one vote, one motion, one vote, effective immediately. So if, there, I don't know how to write something verbally on the fly.
It could just be striking part of the first one, right?
I, yeah, I would say, under, whereas, the second whereas exclusion Area B, strike that entirely, and then the, the reference on Section 2.02, that refers Exhibit A1, that doesn't need to change, because they're both the same, but the exhibit itself would be amended tonight, if it just section, or just Section A, or parcel, or Area A.
You make everything so difficult.
Those are the only two references, too.
I know, I didn't mean to.
Because like with any other interim ordinance that we've done, there have been decisions made at the, whether it was cannabis, or, but whatever's adopted tonight would be in effect, so just make that a reference.
Can you keep that drone out of my neighborhood?
I'm not seeing anything in your ordinances that would limit your ability to amend what's been presented to you. So I think you can amend what's presented to you, provided that we make a careful record of what's being stricken. And I was listening and reading at the same time, but I think what your city manager suggested, which is to take the ordinance with all the provisions and then make a record of what would be stricken, and that would become the final version.
So, Madam Mayor, so, in order to do that, Option One, Page One, Item Number Two, exclusion Area B would be stricken, correct?
Correct, for now.
And in the exhibit, we might have to simply eliminate the exhibit, because I can't, I mean, I could try to redraw now, but that would not look good, so, because there will be an ordinance that will need to be signed. So we would, I would say, potentially just strike the illustration, the map in the exhibit, but leave the text, striking the text for exclusion Area B. I believe that's how we could accomplish this tonight. But the map would have to be stricken from the ordinance, because there's no substitute map ready that we can swap in. I mean, that's okay, we don't need a map.
Okay.
We have the PIDs in the ordinance.
Do you need a second on that motion?
I'll, I'll second the mayor's motion.
All right, so essentially, we are making a motion to lift the moratorium for Section A, and we are going to leave Area B and C for now. Is that a correct statement?
I'll read, yes, but in terms of the ordinance that you're voting on, Option One, striking Bullet Number Two on Page One, which states exclusion Area B, these parcels were recently redeveloped, and no development is likely to occur during the moratorium, that will be stricken.
Okay.
And then in Exhibit A dash one, exclusion Area B, 0411821320025, and 0411821320113 would be stricken, as well as the map.
All right, well said, John. So it's what he said. There's a motion and a second. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Cameron.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Nay.
Councilmember Onasorosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cumming.
Aye.
Mayor motion.
Aye.
Councilmember I.
Aye.
All right, and so then, do we need full action on a publication of the ordinance? Or, I'm reading that here, it says under two.
Yes, ma'am.
So, do we need a motion and a second?
Yes.
Say, I'll make a motion that we, we have full publication of the ordinance as read tonight.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, that is it for agenda items. We just have a few announcements. Crystal's, Crystal Farmers Market is open every Tuesday from 3:00 to 6:30 at the Crystal Community Center, and it runs through September 30th. On Thursday, October 2nd, some, some of the members of the Crystal City Council and Planning Commission may be participating in a tour of redevelopment districts along the Green Line Extension in St. Louis Park and Hopkins from 5:00 to 7:30. Our next city council meeting is Tuesday, October 7th, at 7 o'clock in the council chambers at City Hall. And the city is accepting applications for several volunteer positions on different boards and commissions. They are opening for Planning Commission, Employee Review Board, and on the Metro Blue Line Advisory Committee. For more information, please visit the city website. And city council meetings and work sessions are open to the public. Current and previous meetings are available for viewing and listening at www.criminum.gov. Is there any other announcements that I might have missed? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And second, Teresa, Teresa.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.
Look at that, right at 8:30.
Yeah.
I know, look at that.
Bye-bye.
Bye. So...